Good evening. Welcome to the Manistee City Council Study Session. Today is Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. We are down one member with an excused absence. We will miss Cindy, but we can move right into the agenda items. Public comments on study session-related items. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to come forward at this time? All right. We'll move right into discussion on short-term rentals. Manistee County Planning Director Mike Sacola.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So, we put together a short-term rental presentation that we did in about 2019, but I think we only presented it to the Planning Commission at that time. So, it's been a little bit modified. A lot of the original information's still in there, so if you, like I know Mick's seen it before. But, there's been some added data to update it a little bit. So, if I say, "Hey, this is a little bit older," you know, just give me guys a pre-warning on it a little bit. And this should just serve as an educational presentation. There's some ideas in here, but nothing as far as, you know, set in stone or anything like that. So, I just want to let, make the public aware of that. So, all right. So, we'll get right into it. All right. So, as you guys know, there's been a lot of talk about short-term rentals in Michigan, in Manistee County. We started in 2019. There's been some talk at the state about allowing them as permitted use in every district. And really, it's just our hope after this presentation that you guys will have a better understanding of some of the issues, have some data behind it, and it'll allow you to make some more informed decisions. So, a short-term rental. So, they're defined as a vacation rental. It is running out of a furnished home, apartment, or condominium for a short-term stay. And the owner of the property usually will rent out on a weekly basis, but some vacation rentals offer nightly rates. Monthly agreements are most common, but they can be bi-weekly or even less than one week in the case of vacation rentals. And short-term leases are more common in areas of high demand and low supply of rental properties. This allows the landlord to increase or decrease the rent after each short lease period, and allows for landlord to be more selective when they choose their tenants. All right. So, here's some of the sites that offer them. There's literally hundreds of these. And, but these are some of the more common ones that you guys may have seen. So, when we're talking today, we are only talking on the data from two of them, and that will be from VRBO and Airbnb provided by AirDNA. And, just forewarning you, we did remove statistically the ones that showed up on both websites. They told us how many are both listed on there. So, when we talk about numbers of short-term rentals, that is a pretty, pretty accurate count. So, here's what we had in 2016. We had 31 in the city. Then, in 2017, it went to 92. 2018, we've seen about 153. And I do want to say that that was originally in 2019 what I reported. However, I believe that was inaccurate. That's for the entirety of the 4966 area code, and it is, it is not for just the city. So, when we look at that, 2019, 185, that was an increase in our area code of 284%. And when we go to kind of a bar graph to see what that looks like, you know, that's really what you're looking at. There's data limitations, as there's only, has data for two sites, as we listed, VRBO and AirDNA. We see lulls in the listings. You'll see that in quarter one mostly. As we enter into the winter season, we tend to see a lot of the, you know, people aren't running short-term rentals around here. As you know, we're kind of a vacation destination, kind of in quarter three. So, then they added some home away data in 2017. However, we updated this. So, here's a side-by-side comparison for you. Again, only for 4966 zero. But, you see in quarter three of 21, we busted over to 100. We're back down, but we've seen this generally go up every year. If we average, let's say, in our, well, I'll get into that in a minute. But, continuing climb there, we had seen a little bit of a stall through COVID, but then picking right back up. So, here's our 2019. We're trying to be fair. This is a representation of short-term rentals from December 12th, 2019. This wasn't our off-season, and it should be noted that this is, again, from only two websites. So, then we did a side-by-side comparison right there. The sizes kind of changed a little bit based on like how often they were running out. They, they kind of modified that. And again, you'll see some of these are off into the water or not really represented where they should be. The AirDNA and VRBO and them don't really put the exact location until you're, you're actually booked. So, that's why these are kind of scattered, but they're generally in the right places. So, as you see, if you look at 2019, you go to 2022, you'll see that, and this data was pulled July, or June 1st on the right side, you'll notice that we're starting to scatter off into our residential neighborhoods and really aren't located just in our condos like we were before or in our DDA. We're starting to flip out. There's a little bit, there's a lot more dots within the city than had previously been shown. So, that kind of reflects that a little bit. So, and here's some of the pros of short-term rentals. They can generate additional jobs in the community through property management, cleaning services, supporting the tourism economy by providing additional lodging to visitors, and they're providing the landlords with another opportunity to generate income with their properties. And so, here are some of the short-term rental cons. We see inequality within the lodging sector, so they don't have to meet the regulations that hotels and motels do. There's safety concerns for a lack of fire safety and occupancy inspection rates. You see an increased investment, so we lose those properties for long-term renters, and we can sometimes see a loss of community character as these develop from out-of-towners that, you know, aren't from here or don't understand, you know, some of the laws or the way that things work. We can see, short-term rentals can make it so current residents can no longer afford to live in our homes, and they find, they have to find additional places for long-term renting. If you guys have questions, I forgot to add this, just interrupt me at any time. So...
You know, what you don't have on that last slide, and I think it's important just to interject this, is if we're losing families that are selling their homes and moving away, they have children, that we're losing, we're losing schools, students in Manistee schools. And with the child provision and the childcare provision that's provided from the state to the schools, I mean, that's close to $10,000 a pupil. So, that can be a significant deal breaker or really a very nice perk for the schools. Twenty students, 20 extra students is $200,000 basically.
Right. Yeah, you're absolutely right. You know, schools aren't going to get to see the, the enrollment numbers that they normally see. I mean, you're going to see service industry-type jobs that are lower income, maybe not higher paying. They're going to have hard times filling those slots. I think some of these things are, if you've been paying attention, are ringing some bells within the community. You know, there, you talk to anybody, and I mean, we already have a issue, you know, placing people in jobs right now, and then this is kind of compounding it. But, it is, it is pretty nationwide. I'm not going to say it's only our community, but it is something that we are facing. So, and this is kind of some of the other areas that you're seeing this. These are reactions of short-term rentals around not only here. That one's taken from Venice, Italy. The other one on the left is taken from, I believe, San Diego, California. And this was, I believe, in the New York Times in, I think it's 19 on there. But, kind of gives you an idea like, you know, the negative impacts of this. So, saying that, you guys have had a need for housing. So, this is taken right out of the City of Manistee Economic Development Strategy from 2019 as part of the Rising Tides Program. You guys can see over and over, housing's an issue. They're highlighted on there as SWOT analysis, your opportunities, your threats, and your weaknesses. So, you know, those are all, you know, it's, it's not a big secret we have a housing issue. Here's a need for action in housing. This is from, again, that same Rising Tide. It's an action plan in here. We're trying to explore the regulatory options for short-term rentals. That's why we're here tonight. You know, what's, what's the data? What are we doing? This was something that they called for in 2019. We tried to implement. It didn't, it didn't go out. We're trying to get. That's fine. So, as part of that, really, one of the first things we're looking to do is do some regulatory on short-term rentals, then we can incentivize other areas that need development. The last thing we want to do is incentivize an area just to see it turn over to short-term rentals and not work towards like our, our housing issues. So, we also call for legalization of missing middle housing currently. You guys allow for accessory dwelling units. Do you guys know what those are? No. They're basically like a mother-in-law suite or another dwelling on your primary residence. But, you guys only allow it as a short-term or as a special use. I can tell you, zero people have applied for that. So, what a lot of northern Michigan communities are doing is they're putting regulation within their zoning ordinance to allow for these uses, but then they're only under certain regulations. Katie actually just worked on guest housing in Onakama Township. They revised what they had before to open it up a little bit more, but also with some restrictions on there. So, we're seeing this also. Traverse City is doing it as well as other northern Michigan communities. So, you know, that's, that's one of the issues that we're facing is older people, they, they are locked in on that tax rate, and they really can't afford to move somewhere else. They want to be near their family. We would like them to leave their, their existing home to open it up for a new family, but they really can't afford to leave, leave that community or that house because their tax rates are so low and their house is probably paid off in most cases. So, allowing them an option to move in with their family in an accessory dwelling unit, so the family that's currently there still has space, but still can keep their family close, is one idea that's being called for. Also, the missing meeting is converting housing that might be an existing house into like a duplex or a quadruplex. You know, whatever may, you know, fits for that housing is another idea. And you guys kind of have a little bit of that with some of the mansions I've seen on like Third Street. There's, there's a, an apartment complex in there. But, those are some of the things that really they're trying to stress in your housing action plan I'm, I'm doing and different ways of doing that. So, and then, of course, we have the calls for revisiting and improving the rental inspection ordinance, and changes to the existing ordinance are made. So, yeah, they want you to go back and look at that. And I know that's a common theme that we've had here is the rental inspection, and it's, it's going to come up throughout this, this presentation. So, any questions so far? All right. So, this is around the area. This is actually taken from 2019. I did not update this slide, and I apologize. But, this was last December. Airbnb reported Grand Traverse County property owners had hosted 53,000 guests during the year and pulled in 8 million in revenues, more than 10% of the state total, and the figures were up more than 80% from 2017, and they had more than tripled since 2016. This is causing major issues in other areas. It's great to get the, you know, the visitors coming in the Traverse City, but they are, they are struggling to get people to be able to afford to live there. We're seeing that as our outlining areas that you, you traditionally have not seen growth in, such as Cleon Township had an 11% increase in, in residents in the last census. When it just came out with that snippet, that data's actually not out yet, but 11% increase. So, those outlier areas are starting to gain population because people can't afford to live there, which is also compounding the traffic issues for Traverse City. So, you guys will see East Bay Township, they have an annual $450 short-term rental licensing fee. And along with septic tank inspections, you guys have a, a great sewer system that's being updated and water. So, you don't have to worry about the, the septic tank inspections. But, they also have signed affidavits confirming that neighbors have been notified. They're really, they're really big on that. We also have other, other areas of there within, this was an article that ran in, I'm sorry, the Record Eagle, and it was basically the people that lived in their residence in the residential zones felt that commercial zones should also be regulated. I know previous discussion here talked about not regulating commercial zones, but there is a push in Traverse City to see these commercial zones regulated as well, just for the simple fact that as they're regulated and people, they don't have any long-term residents essentially. Like, people come in for the summertime, live there all there, but then wintertime hits, it's a ghost town. It's hard for their businesses to survive through the wintertime when there's no residents that are in the area. That's basically what that was about. So, here's some other, other articles around the area. We are gracious to have Yarrow Brown doing the Housing North. I believe you guys recently talked and signed an agreement with her to try to get a housing position here. You see the City of Frankfurt Registration Form for Short-Term Rentals there, and then you see lack of affordable housing affecting TC labor shortage. So, these are, these are common themes that are not just us. It is northwest Michigan and the nation as a whole. Frankfurt, I believe, only has 30% permanent residents in the entire city. So, they're trying to, they're trying to figure out a way to, to fix that, and they've instituted short-term rental.
What city was that?
Frankfurt.
Frankfurt. But, a lot of that has been, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that a lot of snowbird, not just short-term rental, but...
No, it's, it's, it's a mixture of both, but the short-term rentals are definitely compounding the issue. I mean, we, they get a lot of what we get is, well, I'd like to retire up there someday, and, you know, and then they, they short-term run in the meantime, and maybe they don't. They don't, they don't ever come. So, that's a common theme is, we hear from people that say, "Yeah, I'm going to retire in Manistee one day," but realistically, they own four, five short-term rentals up and down the coast. They're not coming. So, this is, it's a great thing when you're talking about, if they own one, they probably are. If they own several, they probably have no desire to. This has also been compounded by the, the housing shortages. People wanted to get out of, out of like areas like Chicago, Grand Rapids, and they wanted to move up north. They expedited their retirement. So, now we're, we're also getting hit by a lot of retirees who have decided to make that choice to move up here, and they've held their house. And, you know, there's, there's other issues with that too, you know, as you guys are aware with finding a good contractor and other things as well. So, but, this is all kind of a perfect storm coming in at once. These are frequent short-term goals and policies. We want to do a balanced approach. We need to kind of say, what does the local community and landlords want? A big thing is preserving our character. You know, we don't want to see, you know, a drastic change in, in what makes us great. You know, the, the place-making we've talked about. We don't want to see, you know, a massive change on that. And we need to be fair to not only the people that are coming in, but also the people that live here and to bed and breakfast in hotels. It's, it's really the regulation that they face as opposed to a short-term rental, they're not the same. And then, regulation, ensure that there's some kind of safety and noise standards and they're enforced and regulated. And then, of course, housing, develop a way to ensure that we have long-term housing needs and that they're meeting the, our current residents' need, and we just don't abandon them and then push them out, you know? And then we got, so, this is just a kind of a catch-all. These are just starting points for conversation. We have been, you know, it doesn't mean that you're going to adopt any of these ideas, and it's really up to you guys to pass the regulation. I'm just up here delivering it. Don't shoot the messenger. So, these were previous recommendations, recommendations were developed by the City of Manistee Planning Commission, October 1, 2020. And they are just to act as a starting point for city council to develop off of. We look at Luddington's short-term rental ordinance as a baseline. Luddington developed that over a four-year period. It's a little strong in the, in the regulation aspect of it. However, it covers all the bases. One thing we didn't want to do is come in too light on a regulation. We have people that then turn around and say, "Well, I made a major investment in this property. You're moving the finish line on me, and I'll see you in court." So, that's really what we wanted to avoid on putting that up there. We know it needs to be massaged for Manistee's needs. It is not perfect. It really does need to look at, but the process that they put through, it's pretty solid as far as regulatory goes. The only thing is, it was also developed off of Hollins. They had stole it from them, developed it over four years to meet Luddington's needs, and I think we should steal it too. But, so, they do, the other request was from the Planning Commission to limit the number of rentals. They never actually said what that number was. They just said, "We think there needs to be a limit on it." They would like to see you incorporate the short-term rental into a codified ordinance, potentially the long-term rental ordinance, and combine those two. And then, manage short-term rentals by partnering with professionally local managed company or the owner occupant. So, and we'll get into that in a minute too.
Mike?
Yeah?
Just real quick on the, on the Luddington. So, so they've, this has been at least three years since they've had their ordinance. What's the feedback that we're getting from, from the community, from, from, from the, from both sides? In other words...
Yeah. I mean, I've, I've heard from residents. I mean, Katie lived down there for a little while, and we talked to her about when they came back, and a lot of it was, they set a number, they never filled it. And that was a, a big thing too. Like, everybody was really concerned that, "Hey, we're going to fill this number up," but they have so, so many condos down there. They, they exempted the condos and let the condo associations decide for themselves. So, when that happened, I think they only set their number to like 30, and they didn't, they didn't fill up. So, like, that was surprising. They, other than that, we really haven't heard much about it. There's not been complaints, and there's not been a lot of articles in the paper to really go off of. Their planning director retired during COVID, and I know their economic director took over for her, but I haven't really heard much aside from that. So, and I, I have not reached out to, to find out if they're, they're facing anything. So...
Because, because I know from the, that was our concern is that it was a very small number. And, and again, when you look at the statistics of how many rentals are out there, and we don't know how many of them are actually in a condo environment and how many of them are in...
Right.
Homes. So, it made us feel that the, we would be having a significant impact on people who already were purchasing and owned homes that were in the short-term rental business.
You know, I think I actually missed that. Let me go back up real quick. I wanted to, I go way back, and I apologize. Yeah, right? Yeah, here. So, I did do on this, on this slide right here, if you read the, the band, and I missed that, and I apologize. I went through and counted the ones that were outside of the city limits, and then just subtracted them from the number that was listed, and roughly got between 150, probably like 145 to 160 with 13 private rooms for rent in the city during that time. So, and that's, that's all the ones that are not the 4966 zero that's actually the city. And then, when you look at that, you know, as a total housing, you know, you guys have, what, 5,000 residents, and me and Kayla were doing, Katie were doing the math today. If there's 2.5 residents per household, you roughly are eating about 13% to 15% of your housing in short-term rentals. Sorry to, I forgot about that, and I was like, "Why haven't I hit it yet?" And I apologize. Okay. So, yeah, yeah, Mick, I can reach back and touch on and see if they ran into any issues. But, the reason they kept that number so low was also because they were really concerned with being able to enforce it and maintain the program. So, they said, "Hey, if we can keep it low, then we can, you know, we can see what we have, and then in a couple years look to expand." Then, they never hit the number. So, they're, they're not looking to expand right now. So, so this is kind of what their, their, their short-term rental regulation is. These are their actual ordinance that they adopted, their guide. They put together a really nice guide for people coming in that are trying to short-term rent. And then, their licensing fees, you'll see they're on the left side of the screen. They adopted that in July 13th of 2020 after, you know, like I said, four years of development. And they included these to just try to help pay for the enforcement and maintenance of the program. Like I said, they fit Luddington's needs. They might not fit ours. All right. Everybody good? All right. So, licensing requirements. This can be an example. It's essentially saying that you have to get a license from the city to operate a short-term rental, and no person shall operate without person taking it from the city administrator's office. You have to have a seal with an ID expiration date, city administrator's services manager's seal or signature. And this will serve, our idea was when we came up with this, was to have them put it on like their second-to-last or last photo on their page. So, that way, if somebody's going through and we hire somebody to enforce the short-term rental inspection program, they can quickly go to a listing, go to the last page, look it up, make sure the code matches with what they have, move on. So, that their listing is not bogged down by the regulation. It's not the last picture you see, but it's, it's very easy for whoever's enforcing it. There's a two-year ownership on property, and this is a semi-annual licensing fee, and then you can transfer it within it if it's in a trust or corporate entity to the majority owner. But, you know, just some ideas in that. So, give you, give you guys a minute to look that over. If you guys are outside, just give me a head nod. Yeah? Mayor?
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So, here's a property manager management plan. So, these are local property managers. We see some of them, taken from AirDNA on the bottom-left-hand corner, Century 21. They're not called Boardwalk anymore. They're now North, Northland? Northland. And there's 51 listings with them. You can see the annual change. I'm going to stop that annual change right there and say, "That wasn't available before." So, the annual change is brand-new. That's why you're seeing 600% increases and stuff like that. That wasn't available in, in years past. So, that date is brand-new. So, so, this would be, "Each owner of the short-term vacation rental shall designate a local agent who shall be, reside or be in business within Manistee County or within 30 miles driving distance of the short-term vacation rental, or to serve as a local agent and owner of a short-term rental. Property may designate himself or herself as the agent or themselves," or however they're doing that. "And as long as their physical address or primary residence is within 30 minutes driving distance of the short-term rental address. They have to have access within an authority to assume management and take remedial measures, and they have to be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to answer tenant questions or concerns or enforcement. And the owner should notify the City of Manistee in writing of any modification to the local agent appointment within five days of any such modification, so that the person in charge can contact them if they need to." So, that gives you guys a, a quick idea that is not necessarily the language that you're going to come up with, but just an, an idea. Here's the fee data example. This is one of the condos that is, I actually looked at this condo. I'm not going to pretend like I didn't for just this purpose. So, I was looking at an investment property. This is over by the brewery. This is the avenue revenue that they estimated, average rate 215 a day. Occupancy rate is a little high at 75%. What we said was, "Hey, you know, that is not realistic." The great thing was, this was put together in 2019, and we said, "Hey, you know, let's, let's go for a lower rate." We can assume that there's around 100% occupancy in those 90 days within the season that, you know, is July to, you know, or June till September roughly. I don't know, but the, the period's a little longer because you can go into May and stuff like that. The great thing was, we were totally guessing on this slide. We were backed up with data right here that came out this year. So, this is Manistee in a nutshell. Your average daily rate is about 246 for the 4966 zero area code. Remind that. All data comes from that. The occupancy rate is actually about 55%. And then, your revenue per month is about $2,852. We take the, all this was taken June 1 or July, or it says July 1. It was June 1. And data represents, again, the entirety. 80% 90%, 80% to 90% occupancy rates are shown June through August. Remember, our season's a little longer, and these fees could help fund the rental inspection program. So, as you guys are looking to add this into possibly a long-term rental and make them, you know, the same, you could, you know, it's, it's very easy to say that these fees could, you know, pay for that rental inspection program. So, any questions on this? So, here's an example of some fees. An annual license fee of $500 will be due when the date of the permit expires. If the, if you guys did not regulate at all, did not condo anything, 150 rentals times 500, $75,000 a year. This would go towards hiring somebody, let's say, at 50,000 plus benefits to run the rental inspection program. That's if you did not exempt anything, which I do not think is, is the route that you're looking to go. But, even if you did a semi-annual license fee every two years, 750, you would, again, that'd be 112 semi-annually. Other potential fees are fire inspection. If you don't put this in the rental inspection, the rental inspection program and license fees, again, go to processing, monitoring, and administering the cost of running this program. So, and then penalties. You guys have Inter-Municipal Code, Chapter 203. It lays out, you know, if you're in violation of one of the city ordinances and those penalties thereof. So, and this one calls for tripling the licensing fees. So, that can be a heavy hit if they're operating without it. Really, you want to have some pretty heavy penalties, or else people are just going to violate it, and you're going to be eaten up in administration trying to, trying to fix it. Word will get out if you have a heavy fee that, you know, nobody wants to be penalized.
Can you stop just for a minute?
Yep.
Free Campbell. Safebuilt. Are they...
Mr. Campbell, SafeBuild, are they inspecting the short-term rentals as well as the long-term rentals?
Well, they're all listed as rentals is what I believe at this point. And we just had to send out an enforcement letter for non-responsive rentals, so we're starting to see more of that.
Okay, but they're already handling it so we wouldn't have to hire a separate person. I think I just want to make that clear-
Yep.
-that we're already inspecting them, the ones we know about.
Alright, so I, the final thought is here. I want to thank you for the, allowing us to present again. We hope, again, this, this is just an education and we hope that it, it starts as a, a starting point for you for discussion for short-term rentals. And there's your, your, your Zen of the Day. So, and then, thank you very much. These are my contact information if you guys need to contact us for anything. And these are our sources. Any questions?
Mike, didn't Traverse City just, or are they looking at amending their own ordinance to make them stricter?
Yep, so, and they're, and the people that are invested are not happy. So luckily cities have a little more flexibility than townships. But yeah, I mean, they are. They didn't come in as forceful as many thought they should've. And, you know, there are labor shortages, the transportation around there is rough. You know, I think they pay on the outskirts, I mean, I've been in Manhattan, there's what? Twenty-two dollars an hour for McDonald's worker? I mean, I mean, I think there's labor shortages everywhere. But yeah, I think they're feeling it. I mean, I think we feel it too. If you talk to, you know, anybody in the industry, industries like PCA and stuff like that, they've lost out on engineers because they can't find housing. I mean, I looked when I came back, you know, my wife wanted to come into this area. I came back from overseas and I looked for eight months. Did not buy a house that was adequate to what I thought housing stock should look like. And I ended up putting in sweat equity. I had to walk in and put a roof on. Was not, not something I really wanted to walk in. And gutted everything, so, you know, and I mean, but a lot of people don't have that knowledge base or, or ability to do that. So we do miss out on people or they don't have the time. If you're working, you know, overtime at a, at a plant, you don't really have a lot of time to, to fix your house at that exact moment. Luckily, I had a summer to kind of get into it before I went back to school. And, you know, I was able to. I know planners couldn't find places to rent when we hired them. They had to buy a house immediately of unwalking in. You know, not, maybe not necessarily ready to do that, you know, but had a job and, and jumped into it. And I think it's working out good. So, but, you know, that's, that's one of the things that we run into, so.
The other thing, if I remember, it seemed like there was a lot of litigations back in 2019 on the short-term rentals where there were being, there were lawsuits against the cities. Is, is all of that kind of-
Well, there is, there is a, I mean, I'm not an attorney, let me, let me-
Yeah.
...
But I know, but that was part of the, the concern is that there was a lot of litigation going on.
Right.
And it settled out and where has the rulings kind of-
So there was, there was one through, so like, again, we said codified ordinance, take it out of the zoning. The zoning ordinance, the ones that were not wanting to allow for short-term rentals. Most of those were coming back with their hotels. Their, their commercial use in a residential property, it's not allowed. The one, the, I mean, really, there was only two major cases went to the Supreme Court of the state. They came back and they said, you know, these are not, these are, the zoning ordinance clearly defines these as hotels. You know, but those are zoning ordinance cases. Like when you, when you look at these as codified or actually regulating them, it's a little bit different. So, I mean, I, I would lean towards your zoning ordinance stating that they're more defined as hotels, just as the Supreme Court regulation has. But I think your guys' idea is to regulate these via a codified ordinance, which, okay. You know, like we, we support because then they're not grandfathered in. Currently, there's, you know, you guys don't allow for them, I, I don't believe. And that's a, that's a personal opinion, not a, I would not put a legal standing on that. It's just, they're not really defined in there. They're more defined as a hotel. If I could find a definition for it, that's what I would go more towards. Now, it's not to say that, the, the problem with, with looking at these from a, a planning perspective is, okay, well, if they're not allowable, our long-term rentals, allowable, and then getting on, going down that rabbit hole. So, you know, we'd really like to see you guys just regulate them via a codified ordinance, put it to bed for the city. And then there was a lot of regulation in 2020. I don't know if you guys were, the House bill that went through. But it ultimately is, it's still out there, but it's kind of dined in committee. But that was to allow them as a permitted use. That regulation was really, really light. And it was, I'm glad that, to see it and it put the regulation back in your guys' hands because I, I really think that, you know, you know your community best. And just have a permitted use in all districts without being able to stipulate anything on them is, is a little concerning for me to try to protect through like green space buffers or other, or other abilities to do so.
We've had many discussions about this, or at least several, I'll just say several. But they've been pretty intense. But I think we did agree on some main things. Letting the condo associations regulate their own short-term rentals and the amount of them. We also talked about B and Bs where the owner stays in the house.
Yeah, your private room rental.
Right, and didn't have a problem with unlimited situations like that.
Right.
And the other consensus that we had on short-term rentals was-
It's a Dunes Drive.
DDA.
Downtown DDA would be the perfect spot.
Right.
It was upper-
Upper floors, yep.
Yep, second floor.
And, and-
For term rentals.
Yep, those were basically consensus that had come through but were not made as part of the motion. I think we recommended them as well, even though they weren't made a part of that motion was to allow the condo association to decide for themselves. And the DDA, and we would say even the entirety of River Street into the Peninsula District to have the ability to have upper-story dwellings as well.
We'd also talked about Dunes Drive and making them regulate their own because they don't have any property owners that are, you know, across the street from them basically because it's a berm there and then the industrial park. So that didn't seem to be a big problem and they had been operating like that for many years.
Are they an association on their own?
I have no idea. They're just, I just know that several of the property owners went out their, their homes for big family reunions and things.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how you craft that to, I mean, you could craft it just by the road, I guess, but I would ca, I'll ask you to talk to your attorney about that. The only reason I would caution is because if I'm in another area and we're doing much the same way, could we apply for that as well?
All I'm saying is we discussed it at a work session. It came up, no discipline was made, we discussed it as a possibility.
So, yeah, I mean, those were basically the consensus that we came up with. Your, the reason I say the Peninsula District and extending it down River Street is your master plan calls for a form-based code there. If you look at the kind of development that would be, it'd be kind of mirroring towards the River Street as it exists now with upper-story dwellings, those types of things. More of a C-three business district than the Peninsula District. But that form-based code has not been redone, but in the future it could be. Allow for that up there. Maybe with some restrictions, but, you know, that would be, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk of the extension of River Street to the Peninsula District. And that might get that, that moving a little bit quicker for you guys.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it. So I think, Mayor, you talked about some of the history, the consensus items, some of the things to discuss, just looking at some of the other ordinances. So Charlevoix had, everyone was allowed one personal unit that they may rent for no less than seven days, no more than twenty-eight days. And then they had an overall cap of eighty business units for the entire city. And those can be rented without restriction. And then Luddington had a proximity and concentration consideration where you couldn't have, you limit two short-term rentals per city block. So I think we have those consensus items, but I think I'm hearing, I was hearing, I'm talking with you and I wanted to see what the other council members, but there's also this concentration aspect that there's a concern about it kind of in certain neighborhoods and not others. I just wanted to get some feedback on that, if that's something council feels should be in ordinance if we were to draft one.
So how did they manage the concentration? What's, what's the process? So if I've got ten currently in a, in the north side district on Fourth Avenue, how do I just determine which ones were gonna be licensed and which ones aren't? Is it a lottery? How do they?
Yeah, I can look into that. If it's a lottery, I think-
Do they help delivery?
Do they, okay.
I also agree with some of the points that other council members have brought up in the past too. And that is people who invest in buying these, buying the homes and, and using them as vacation rentals, they clean them up pretty well, so that's, that's a, that's a plus for the neighborhood. But I would like to see that equally distributed across the river so that they're not, so there's not a heavy bunch of them all on the north side, excluding the condos. I know the condos are gonna be excluded anyway, but.
And one thing Charlevoix had was a waitlist too. So even though you have that cap, you'd be on a waitlist and pay a fee to be on there. And then once it opened up, you could become a short-term rental. One conversation was about the amount of, we have a lot of commercial property on River Street and it's almost too much for a city our size at this point. So it was kind of, as Mike mentioned, that'd be a great place to add some of these short-term rentals and it's an experience when people stay there right in the middle of a downtown area. So that was something about not limiting it there, but perhaps in the neighborhoods.
So are we comfortable with just taking the data from VRBO and Airbnb as where all of these are? Or do you think a deeper search needs to happen?
No, that's not correct because they don't pinpoint exactly where they are until you book them. So we need to figure out exactly how many we have and subtract which ones are the condos, which ones are downtown, which ones are the waterfront. Because you can't put a cap on rentals until you know exactly how many you have and where they are. I mean-
Oh, that's my point. We don't, I'm not comfortable knowing-
Yeah.
-with this, this data because I don't know that it has captured all of it.
We need to do a deeper search. Like we just keep going round and round. We can't put a cap on them till we know how many we have.
So what are our, what are some solutions to finding a, doing a more deep, a deeper search?
So there are some companies that can do that study. I think it's, looked like it was ten to fifteen thousand, but it's something we could do. I think you get a rough estimate just by going to the sites and checking kind of different times of the year, but you don't know exactly where they are.
So is Molly, our assessor or SafeBuild, when they're putting numbers and things into their databases, are they distinguishing between short-term rentals and long-term rentals on the properties?
Not at this point. I think it's just rentals.
Can we establish that as a criteria?
Yeah, I can work with our, yeah, SafeBuild can start distinguishing that.
There was a company, I have to go back. It was before you were a city manager that did a-
Skranikus.
-a presentation that, I can't remember the name.
It was Skranikus.
Yeah, and I think I have that, I can bring that up.
I think it was like three thousand dollars for them to do.
It was higher than that, but it, it wasn't as high as what Bill just quoted either. It was under ten thousand.
Yeah. So yeah, this was-
Was that it?
So I can get some quotes and, and we can see if that's something we want, if council wants to pursue.
Yeah, getting the quotes could be a good idea. Mr. Bachmann?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to add anything?
No, I'm still trying to absorb all this because I really haven't put a lot of time into this. I think the concession side of consensus items are pretty close. I like the condos. My question is if the condo controller only still pay the inspection fee and pay the registration fee? Other than that, I'm really kind of not committed to this, to be honest with you.
Aaron?
So if we're leaving the River Street off to itself, would the DDA have anything to do with that then?
In what respect? Well, we, they'd still register, but there wouldn't be a cap or anything like that.
Just an opportunity to invest in that area without having to go through a, a lottery, for example, if there is a limited number.
Right. And it's been sort of a chronic problem that we've had with the downtown is encouraging the, the property owners to, to fix up and rent out their upper stories so we could make this a win for them somehow, might be useful.
But do we know how many you want to invest upstairs?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a crapshoot, I don't, I don't really-
Okay, so I think we could come back at the next, maybe, we don't have anything on the next study session, so I could try to get something back with quotes and get some more info. Maybe come back with a, some more examples of, of different ordinances or things like that.
Okay.
To me, you know, we can't just put it off forever either because we, you know, it's, it's clear we have a shrinking amount of long-term rentals and it's not gonna get better unless we intervene somehow. And, you know, again, you know, young people coming into this community, you know, they're living in Luddington, they're living in Onekama, they're living wherever they can and then trying to fare their way to Manistee for a job.
That's not really unique though to Manistee. It's unique everywhere. There's cities all across the country where you can't even, you can work, but you can't live in your own city.
Right.
When I moved here in ninety-eight, it took me weeks to find a house that I could buy. And you just want any. So this isn't a new problem, not being able to find housing that's, that's reasonable and affordable, so.
But also where are they working? Because there's not really a lot of jobs here, I mean.
Well, there's a, there, there may not be a lot of, of six-figure jobs here, but there are a lot of jobs in Manistee. Ask anybody in, in the downtown area, there, there's probably not a, a business owner that is not have a sign-up looking for, for somebody to work. And including our, our smaller industries, including packaging corporation and Morton's. So it's, there, there's work to be had for people who want to work and live here in Manistee.
I appreciate you diving into this, Mr. Campbell, so that we can come back with some-
Okay. It sounds like there's an appetite on council to move forward with, with this, so. We'll get back to the next study session.
Alright, are we ready to move on? Anybody else want to say anything about rentals at this point?
I asked for this agenda item, discussion on charter revision to change age qualification to serve on city council. I had, had a couple of great encounters with the leadership team this past year. And we have people that are in the leadership program who are less, who are-
and, and we have people that are in the leadership program who are less, who are not 25 years old, uh, but most of them seem to be at least 18, I started really thinking about this eight requirement, it seemed a little archaic to me, or, um, I, I don't know how long it's been there, I know our charter, I think the last major revision of the charter was in 1968, so, being a registered voter and also living in the city and also must be a M O, have to be 25 years of age when filing, um, their petitions, seemed a little strange to me since, since 18-year-olds are allowed to vote, um, so, I did some digging, I made some phone calls, uh, and I learned that Luddington, in their charter specifically says 18 years of age is one of the qualifications or older, and then I looked at Frankfurt and I looked at Traverse City, and both of theirs said just has to be a, a registered elector, which is the same way of saying registered voter, which is 18, which is age 18, so, then I decided, well, why don't I call the county commissioners and talk to somebody on the county commissioners, um, board, and I got ahold of Jeff Donson, he says, I know it's 18, it's either 18 or registered voter, um, so I feel like we are really behind the eight ball, and we could be a lot more progressive, we did a great job last August when we said, hey, let's make all of our commissions, have them all come in here and be videotaped, and, and that put us a leg up, but, but this age restriction is, is, I think this should be modified, I, I took a look at the wording that's in our current charter and it reads, "No person shall be eligible to the office of city council, councilperson unless he or she has been regis, has been a registered elector of the city or any area annex thereof for not less than two years, immediately preceding the filing deadline, and unless he or she, and unless he or she shall be at least 25 years old on such date. No member of city council shall during his term of office hold any other city office or employment unless otherwise provided in this charter." So this one little paragraph, it's in section two, uh, chapter two, so it's section 2.3 on the qualifications, to me, it seems like it would be a simple fix to just take that very complicated run-on sentence that says, "No person shall be eligible in the, to the office of city councilperson unless he or she has been a registered elector of the city for any area or any area annex thereof for not more than two years, immediately preceding the filing date, period, and delete, and unless he or she shall be at least 25 years of age on such date," because the first part of that sentence, if they are, if they are a registered elector means that they're 18 years old, because that's the only way they can become one, so, I'm, I asked George and I asked Bill Campbell for some information on how to go about doing that, it is quite a long process to do, and, um, I think we could do it if there was interest in doing it, and I think that's the first step that I'm at, to see if, at this work session, we can have a, if there's anybody who is opposed to changing it or would like to be in line with other municipalities.
I support.
Question is, do, do, charter amendments go to the public to vote, correct?
Yes, it would still have a, go ahead and say.
Absolutely.
A vote for a vote.
If we're going to change one charter issue, are there not a number of charter issues that should be amended at the same time, I mean, should we not look at the whole charter, I mean, I, I know you found one issue, but.
We did, and that is, that technically what would happen then is, we'd need to form another commission, a charter commission, and that way we would look at the entire document.
Should we, should we not, I mean?
That would be more lengthy, but, I would just like to change, change this part of it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to change this part of it, I, I think if we're going to change a charter, we ought to look at a charter, and not just look at the one thing, personally, but that's.
I would agree with Dave, if we're going to change one thing, why don't we look at all of it, so we don't have to go through this process again, I mean, if it's been since 1968, why not look at the whole thing?
Yeah.
And I agree, I mean, changing the, the age, I mean, we do need more young people to.
It's certainly a catalyst to, to look at change.
Talking with Georgia would require, you know, five, a super majority, so five votes, and, um, as it is now, even just to do an amendment to the one portion, it would be kind of tight, according to, you have to, the ballots due to the county August 16th for November, so, yeah, just, just council aware.
We could, can we do the change and do the committee, or do we just do the, can we do both? Can we put in to change the, the age requirement and form a committee, or can we, or do we?
So you'd have to do, you'd try to do just the age one on this next one, and then do a charter committee to look at other things.
Yeah.
And that would be the next, that'd probably be.
So that would require two ballots, two ballot proposals then, is what you're saying, so if you wanted to do the change to the age restriction first, and then?
And then look at, at.
The charter.
Well, and, and before you do that, you'd want to have a committee actually look at the charter and decide, are there others, we don't really know that there are other things, this is one that has popped up, there may or may not be, right, so you, it would be, uh, an action group that would determine whether or not there would be anything else that would need to come to a, a vote, but this one, I, I agree, I, I think that it's, it's appropriate, I always thought it was a little bit odd that, you know, you weren't allowing, you know, again, it goes back to the same old thing, you know, you can, you can fight and die for your country, but you can't run for city council, it seems a little bit odd.
And I wish George was here to explain it a little bit further, we would need to get a little more information from him, I think.
Didn't happen to run through the whole thing, so? Run through the whole thing last night?
Did you run through the whole page?
Oh, no. I guess I don't understand what you're asking. No, I, I, I think it's imperative that we, um, recognize that we're in the 21st century, and that this is going on all around us, and, and, I think, either way, even, even if we established, if we pushed this through, I would tie it to an upcoming election, I wouldn't want to call a special election, maybe we would have a start date on it, or effective such-and-such a date, I don't know the answers to those questions, so, that being said, you could still, every committee that we've had that's reviewed something seems to take about nine months for it to get through.
Well, your two options are the November general election that are the, for this year, 2022, or the November 2023.
All right, but if we could, let's just say we wanted to make this one change to see if we could go through for this November's election.
I s, I am not sure, we'd have to talk to George to see if that's possible, because.
Okay, let's find that out first.
He has, this is, let me bring up the email that he sent, do we have that?
I said, put it on there, it's under the.
This is what he sent to me, you can read what he sent. So, it can be proposed by city council, it requires five members of council to vote in favor, and it can be brought at the next regular general election or special election.
I mean, I'm less than 60 days, well, we have, we have time then, if.
But it also needs to be, uh, sent for approval to the Attorney General and the Governor.
So if we could put it on the next agenda, get it approved, and then sent out, I mean, we could at least try.
The next, the next agenda?
Be next week. So, yeah, if there's some language you could send, we could look at it with George, and, I think the first step was seeing if there were five members that were interested, and I don't see anyone opposed, so.
You could straw food.
I'm not opposed to it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I do think your idea is good too, to take a look at the entire charter, but honestly, you know how long that, that's going to take.
Yeah, I, I think it's optimistic they're going to get this in November too, yeah, I think they're really optimistic, I think they might make that through, but.
You never know.
Well, you can try, make the interesting, you know, make the election a little more interesting, see how the locals.
Could be.
So I think you're making.
Yours could be interesting enough.
Pardon me?
I said Phil and Mixie's going to be interesting enough.
Well, I've heard, so.
So we're, we're making Heather nervous, but we'll look into seeing if.
Very nervous.
Meeting, we get the language, um, something before council next meeting, it looks like maybe we could get it in, it's going to be tight, but we'll see if we.
Like I said, I just want to.
And if it doesn't, well, it just goes to the next election.
Exactly.
So it's.
Exactly.
We're still making progress.
Well, and, and the one thing that is, I just want to make, the charter does state that you have to be registered, I believe it says for two years though, correct?
Yes.
In your district for two years.
Would actually make you 20.
20, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Well, is that a common, um, verbiage in that, is two years, you have to be registered for two?
Well, that's what I want, if you're going to.
And that part, I think, is important, because you don't want somebody to just walk into your community and now all of a sudden.
That's not the way I understood it when I first ran, I mean, you had to be a resident of the city for two years.
Two years.
And I think that's easy enough to, to prove, it has nothing, I mean, you can get registered to vote.
Is that what it says, that's, I wasn't sure, when you read it, I thought you said that it had, you had to be registered in your district, registered in your district for two years, is that what you said?
I.
Or resident, okay, I thought you said registered.
For a district, you have to reside in that district, but you can live a whole bunch of other places before that around.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't say registered in your district for two years, it just says residing.
Reside.
Okay, all right.
Do you have to be registered in the city or just registered to take away from here? Do we care?
In the city. Yeah, to run for city council, you would expect somebody to be here at least a couple of years, so that they'd have a.
Okay.
An idea of what the city was all about.
Okay, more homework for George.
All righty.
So we're going to put this on next week's agenda then?
Plan.
Okay.
It's called meeting with George, I think, on Thursday.
All right, who we have to, other? Nothing.
Nothing?
Really? One make a motion to each other.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Adjourned. I was saying we didn't have time to vote target this night.